Tena no, tena koto ete ropu toitoku. So welcoming the advisory groups here this evening. And we're going to be hearing from each of the advisory groups and then we will be going on to debate item 3.5, which is the review of the model. So what we're going to do is we're going to work through them in alphabetical order. It's the easiest way to do it fairly. So we're going to start with the accessibility advisory group. And I understand we have Rachel, Nick and Ellen here. So if you would like to come to the table and join us. And so councillors know, we've got five minutes of the groups sharing with us about the review and then some time for questions. And Ellen, you're welcome to come forward too. If you would like to join them. So councillor Fitzsimons, you might need to take your bag off the chair.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for the opportunity to have a discussion this afternoon. I think, I mean, I'm going to speak personally and I think Rachel will also speak as well. And perhaps Alan might speak as well. I think, I think personally, there was, for me, there was a relief to see the recommendations because they have taken some time to make their way back and for us to see them. So I think that was, that was, it was really good to see them. Personally, I didn't have a lot to argue with, really. There wasn't an awful lot to have disagreement with. So for me personally, I have a general agreement with a lot that sits within the recommendations. So that's, that's a really positive thing to kick off with. I'd like to make a few comments around some of the, some of the recommendations generally, as opposed to the specific recommendations, because I've just said that I am in general agreement. I'd like to clarify and also ask that the resources are made available to support the recommendations. And I think that's really important because there is a, there is an increase in group members for our group. So I'd like to see that and ensure that there are the appropriate resources made available to facilitate that, that growth within the group. I think that there is certainly agreement within AAG that there is a need for greater support to deliver a coherent work plan. But I think that for me personally, I'm mindful that we have 12 hours a year. And I know for me personally, and also for Rachel, I can't speak on her behalf, but we hold senior leadership roles within our organisations. And that takes a significant amount of our time throughout the year. And I think that council needs to be mindful of that. And it also needs to be mindful that the current group has limited time to work on the work that we have at present, let alone any new work plans that are to come. Even though there is a significant level of support for work plans, we just need to be incredibly mindful of the commitment of time that we have at present. I do have some comments in regard to the removing barriers from participation section. I think a greater focus is needed around understanding what full participation means. Because within the, within the report, there was a rather narrow understanding of what full participation meant. It kind of focused around car parks and access to car parks. And I think that that is important. But that limits the scope and understanding of what full participation means. And I think certainly within our group, access to information and access to ideas has become equally important and also quite crucial to full participation within, within the group. So I think a greater understanding and a greater development of full participation for this group would be around access to information and also full participation within the group process. So, I mean, we can certainly have a much deeper discussion about what that means. So I think I will leave it there. Allow Rachel to make some comments.
... profile as the community probably come up here with Rebecca and other people around the council. So I wanted to thank you for that. And I was pleased to see that, what I mean by that is that we're being involved earlier in the process of any initiatives that are happening. The engagement that we've had with councillor Matthew and with others around this table as well. I feel like we're more connected with all of you, which has been really good. And so I was pleased to see that the report and recommendations endorse our key strategic role. Because I think before, we probably wouldn't seem strategic advisors. But I think over the last year, we've really appreciated being able to have those strategic conversations to improve Wellington for all people. And that's one thing. I totally agree with what Nick's saying about the scope of AAG. I know Alan has a different view to me in terms of what we call the group. And now whether it's an accessibility group or a disability advisory group, but I probably, from what he's saying, this is actually an accessibility and inclusion group. Because often we get stuck with just talking about access, but we forget the people who actually need to be living here. And I think that's important. If I were to recommend anything, that would be to change the name to an accessibility and inclusion group. But I haven't had AAG or NAC or anyone say. Yeah, so thank you for the opportunity and good to see where it's going.
I think there's only one point I would like to make, and I brought it up before the group who are doing the review. And that is, there does appear to be a lack of memory within these council groups. And I'd just like to reinforce this, you know, what information is available? Where is that information? How do you access it? And is it accessible? So often, and I have been on the accessibility advisory groups for four terms, two by two or three years' terms. And I find a lot of the same material is coming up a lot of the time. So that's why I make this point. We need some sort of memory bank there that we can go over. Because people move on within council and a lot of the information gets lost. That's all I want to say.
Oh, kia ora kato, you've made some very good points. Are you ready for some questions, if we have any? I'm not sure if we do or not, councillors. Are there any questions? Oh, councillor Phone.
Kia ora tato and thank you for your mahi. And Ellen, what did you mean by a memory bank? So as an example, if this council goes, that the next council that comes in and picks up the role, that we could dive into that place to find out where things have got to? Or, yeah, is that what you meant?
Partly what I meant. What I find is that I have to keep on providing council staff as they come and go with material and documents that we may have discussed three, five, 10 years ago. And I think I have a pretty good retrieval system, which is available to the council if they want it.
Sounds like you do.
Are there any other partai, councillors? No? Well, tena kato, thank you so much for taking the time to participate in the review and for coming to kooriro with us. We really appreciate you doing that. Thank you. All right, so now we will move on to the environmental reference group. I think we've got Lynne here. Thank you, Lynne, for taking the time to come and kooriro with us. Oh, some flexibility.
Sorry, everybody else is in full-time employment, so it's actually really hard to keep taking time off at this sort of time of day. You haven't quite finished. In general, we did agree with the recommendations. We would have really liked to have seen the feedback from staff and other councillors and things on our group. Because there was some, like appendix one, the further data was pretty jolly negative toward, in an overall thing, toward the groups. And it would have been nice to see, given the significant effort that we put into submissions and reports and things, you know, why that was. But the review is so outdated, it probably doesn't matter anymore anyway. But in the future, we really do want feedback, regular feedback. So from council staff, you know, who we provide things for, and even from councillors. So if we, you know, write your submission and present it. I'm not asking for an essay, just that was worthwhile or it would have been more helpful if you had done. So just a bit of feedback, please. The numbers, if it's going to drop down to 12, we need, we'd prefer to start 15, but if it was going to drop to 12, we do need at least once a year recruitment. Like, there was every imaginable excuse to not recruit. Like, with the review, Covid, we're too busy, it was just endless. And so the last recruitment, because it'd been put off so long, was eight people. So I interviewed 16 and it took a long time and it was quite a big effort. So, you know, if you're going to drop to 12, we need to be recruiting on a regular basis with absolutely no excuses to do so. And the numbers at times drop quite quickly. So also, it needs to also trigger. So if the numbers for some reason drop to say eight, then maybe if the recruitment time isn't close, we need to trigger to do some recruitment. Because I know there was one time and there was a heap of people left for all sorts of different and valid reasons. And it, basically, it's a lot of work and you need the, you need a range of expertise because environments are so broad. And we also need a number of people to spread the load. So, you know, you have Steve on the waste and, you know, Michelle on the transport. So, you know, you need to spread it. If you don't have two liaison officers, you need to have a decent handover. Like, when our latest one turned up, all the previous submissions and documents from AAG had disappeared off the system. And I had to find them on my system and email them through. At one point, they lost all the codes, so we couldn't get access into Dropbox. You know, it just needs to be a decent handover in transition. Or have two liaison officers. But I know that's more expensive and probably unnecessary. But at least have a system to look after the information. Definitely have better access to the work plan. And probably, yes, to improve a bit of trust. Sometimes we're just given the information way too late. Like the Backyard Tonga project, we weren't told about that till after it was done. And we were presented with a fait accompli two days before it went out to the public. Now, there's a lot of expertise on our group in all the areas that that covered. And I thought that was very poor. National policy statement on indigenous biodiversity was written before we knew that the council was writing one. We asked about it and we actually wrote our own, which was actually in largely disagreement with the council. But we were told we could, so we did. But it would have been actually nice to discuss that with the council officers before they wrote it. And they did tweak it a little bit when they came to tell us what they'd written. And then they didn't get a copy of our submission. So they came to talk to us about theirs and they hadn't seen ours. So, you know, there was all these just lack of merging systems. So that's enough for me.
Oh, kia ora, thank you. Councillors, are there any partai for Lynne? Oh, yes, councillor Calvert and then councillor Phone.
Thank you. Just looking at the role of the environmental reference group and thinking about a lot of our environmental considerations now, we often look at them from a regional perspective. And I'm thinking the likes of water and, yeah, you know, the open spaces and all of that. Do you think from an environmental perspective, it would be better to take, be a regional approach as opposed to a city approach?
We actually often do. But then we're, we tend to pull back our submissions because we realise we're Wellington City Council. But in our discussions, yes, we do. Because otherwise, it's frankly silly with some of these issues. So, yes, you're right.
Does the Greater Wellington Regional Council have such, are you aware they have such an advisory group?
They have a biodiversity group. They don't have one, I don't know that any council that I know of in the country has one as broad as environmental reference group. Like Nelson has a biodiversity one. Lots and lots of people have transport ones. But I think in the review, it did mention a few councils that they had looked at, but I don't remember the details. But in some ways, it's actually good to be a very broad group. Because all these things are so interrelated. To separate them out into little silos, the council's siloed enough without separating it out. So it's quite nice to be able to pull everything together.
Is it something that you think, from an officer capability? Are you seeing that we're able to, you know, the officers are able to do that? Or are you feeling that you are picking up on things that our officers aren't necessarily aware of?
I'm not sure your officers have the mandate. In some cases, they obviously do. Some of your resilient stuff. But I wonder if they've been given a mandate to think more broadly. And it's very time consuming too. Because you have to liaise with all these other councils and people. I don't know, I think that's above my...
Okay, no, that's fine, I just interested.
But yes, you absolutely should be working with all these other councils.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Phone.
Kia ora Lynne, and you've got a really good point about the feedback. And I do just want to bring up that the environmental reference group submission for planning for growth was excellent. And that felt like my bible for going forward on that piece of work. So thank you. Just with the recommendations and... Just with the recommendations and the way that the environmental reference group is working, do you feel confident that going forward, the group will be able to have impact or value with what's being recommended?
Yes, it's only little tweaks around the edge really that's recommended. Like, I'll tell you what some more funding would be good for is more workshops and even involving all the advisory groups. We had one on the Golden Mile and I thought that was actually quite, pretty worthwhile. So if there's spare funding, that's what I would be using it for. I think you'd need also better, once a year, an introduction to council and how councils work for new members. Because, you know, there's a lot of acronyms floating around and to get your head around, you know, I seem to be quite often explaining what a long-term plan is and how that fits with an annual plan. And people just think, well, why is it every three years if it's at a, you know? So I think a decent induction system to the basic mechanics of council and how you fit in with the regional council and where Wellington Water fits in and et cetera, et cetera. So I think that would be useful and you could pull in all the groups.
Tina Koele, Lynne, thank you so much for coming in and for participating in the process as well. We know that it's taken a lot of time to do that, so thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Now I'd like to invite Jocelyn and Anthony from PAG to come forward. Talofalava, kia ora ana, kia ora. So, yeah, same thing, five minutes and then there will be some questions. Thank you.
Actually, ask Anthony to open it up for us.
Talofalava, feftai mooli avanua. I just want to thank our chair, Jocelyn, for allowing me to lead this forum on behalf of PAG. I think for us, the review was good. We were happy with it. We were happy with the opportunity to feedback to the initial findings and was happy with the explanations and response and some of the changes. We felt some of the changes were made from our feedback. There was a little bit of anxiety in terms of how long the review took because we thought it might just drop off everyone's radar. But it was pleasing to see where it landed in the end. Yeah, so all in all, it was a positive feel. And I think for us, that has a lot to do with the council team themselves and their engagement with us, which hasn't been there previously, or is strong previously. So I think all in all for PAG, it's been a positive, it's ended up a positive experience and one that we look forward to, whatever the developments are from it. So we've really just come here mainly just to answer any questions, if there's any other questions that you may have. Yeah, I mean, I know it's a rarity that there's a Pacific group that's not moaning or wanting anymore, but...
We're happy.
But we're actually pretty happy anyway, so, yep.
Well, thank you, councillor O'Neill.
Kia ora, it's fantastic to see you again and so soon. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about the role of and value of a democracy advisor to your group and in the plan we have proposed to add an extra officer to that, whether that be from the engagement team or somebody else in the council. Could you talk a little bit about that value or maybe some extra resourcing there?
Sure. Having a officer that's been there for a while and not having so many changes has been a benefit to us. I've got to say, I don't know whether it's an individual's thing, but the officer that we have assigned to us really took the time to learn about the group and understand the group. And so there was a lot of things that didn't need to be said that just happened. I think an addition of someone from the community group team side would be a benefit because being an ethnic representative of the group, it just makes sense that it's a community-covered officer that sort of comes in and sort of gets the specific perspective on their work as well. And also we get feed the information from council in terms of what's happening in those sort of work areas. So I think that for us, it's a positive, can I mean positive? But I think the consistency of having the same officer, but someone who's quite strong and understands the processes, but certainly learnt, took the time to learn about the group and its little nuances was good.
For us, if you go right back to the beginning of our term, we were a group that we were sort of flipping on both sides of the coin, where there was a consistent change and democracy advisors. And we're now sitting at the end of this process where we have one committed democracy advisor. So we've seen what happens when it's not working well. And now we're seeing the benefits of it when something is working really well. And on top of that, we see that not only has the democracy advisor himself evolved, that we have also evolved as a team. It is a really critical role and having someone stand there on a consistent basis in a very stable position allows us to also have a broader understanding of how council operates, what is council's expectation of us and to also help us keep that clarity inside of us of our purpose as an advisory group.
Councillor Calvert.
Thank you. I mean, you won't be aware of this, but I'm looking at proposing an amendment that the council looks in principle agreeing to setting up an ethnic advisory group of some sort. So looking at our migrant ethnic community outside of Pacifica. And just wondered whether, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but whether you've got any views on that and if there was one developed, whether you think it would be valuable for your group to provide some advice on how to bring different voices together? Just wondered if you've got a view on that?
Yeah, I think, I think it would be good. If the council's confident that they've got it right with PAG, then I think they can move on to forming another ethnic group. Because within the Pacific advisory group, it's not just, I mean, we have the label Pacific, but it's not one group. There's some 20-odd islands within the Pacific region and they have their own nuances and differences. So to manage that is a challenge. I think having strong leadership is key. And I think for our group, like I said before, the confidence that the council understood the group to begin with means that the group will offer more. I think the other side of it too was for us, we learnt that really having a good understanding of the terms of reference of what we're actually being part, that we're actually part of council, to support council. And it's not sort of a broadcasting group that just moans to council and that sort of stuff, so. Yeah, that's what I think, yeah.
Just riding on that, one of the greatest strengths about being, sitting in a place of leadership is that leadership needs to reflect what the landscape looks like. And when you're sitting at those really high levels of leadership, you really need to be able to have the things, the layers in between that will connect your right to the grassroots. So we are fully supportive of having an ethnic advisory group sitting here within council because those are the voices that will, you know, carry itself right across this high level of leadership here. We've seen the value of us being Pacific people, having our voices here. So likewise, we see those principles would be able to replicate itself within, with an ethnic group as well. Thank you.
Thank you, are there any more partai councillors? No? Councillor Phone.
Just a similar question to what I asked Lynne from environmental reference group, but do you feel confident just with these recommendations that council will be able to get the best of what you're offering in terms of impact for your community and that we're listening to you and those changes are coming and you'll be able to see that? Yeah, just having faith in the process, that you're comfortable with the process going forward?
Given where we have come from, the mountains that we've had to go over, the doors that we've had to break down, the walls that we've sort of come crashing headfirst into, this is, we can't sort of underestimate how good it is to be sitting in this position right now. And really commend the team here at council for the way they have gone about it. It's been good. In comparison to where we've been, it's been good. So in a good place like this, we're very optimistic that it's going to get even better as we sort of move forward, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, it feels more of a joint effort. And again, that's a lot of work from us, having to do a lot of work in terms of understanding what our role is, what our scope is and being okay with it and knowing that we're contributing to the bigger body at council. But also we've found that it's reflected as well, you know, with starting, you know, we've had that feeling of value and added, you know, added value, so.
Tina Kooroa, thank you so much for taking the time to come and kooro with us and also for participating in the review. We really appreciate your constructive feedback, it's really helpful, thank you.
Just real quickly, chair, from the rest of the team, the rest of PAG, we wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a wonderful New Year.
And to you too, into the PAG team. All right, from youth council, we have Ella and Jackson. Noh mai, har emai.
Is that his signature?
All the mics not turned on. Himima mai wautu koutou ruenanga taiohi. And we're here to yarn about the terms of reference and all funky things like that.
Yeah, Kia ora. Overall, we really like it. A couple of main points that we especially liked was the meeting frequency staying at every two weeks because we find that keeps youth councillors more engaged. Pay being more equitable between all the groups, that's a big one. Sticking to 20 youth councillors as well. And we don't really mind the proposal to have three times two-year terms. So overall, that's pretty much all we have to say about it. It's just, we like it and thank you so much to Carolyn and Baz and the whole group and all of you for working on this for so long. It's all positive stuff.
I reckon that's a record for the fastest submission from youth council, that's awesome.
We understand you've had a long day.
Thank you so much. Councillors, are there any partai? Councillor Conde.
Kia ora, there has been some discussion when we're looking at these about the age range for the members of the youth council. And I was just interested in sort of starting that kooro about whether you think the age range is about right. There was just a question amongst councillors about whether some of the older members, maybe 22, 23, 24, and how that age gap works within some of the much younger members who are still in high school. So since you're here, it would be great to hear from you about how you think that that's working.
I think, I mean, in terms of both sides of that age range, we've been, I mean, we had a workshop a couple of weeks back with some high school students. And we said, hey, I said to some of them after, at the end, hey, you should really apply for youth council next time it comes around. And they said, oh, what's the age range? I said 14 to 24. And they said, great, when we turn 14, we'll join. So there's certainly an enthusiasm there, but also I think we, we have a common experience. As much as there is a significant diversity of experience within young people as a community, and obviously that's the case, and same with all the other communities that have advisory groups, there is a common lived experience as young people. And we really do value the contributions of our older members. And there doesn't, I mean, there's, I've been on youth council for getting on five years and there's been, at no point have I noticed any kind of disconnect. Everyone comes to youth council with a sense of empathy for others and we understand the diversity of lived experience. So while we haven't discussed it around the youth council table, as far as I can see, it's all good.
Yeah, in terms of getting engagement from all age ranges in the meetings, I think a couple techniques we've tried is breaking out into smaller groups, simply so we don't just have the university students dominating the conversation because I think that can sometimes, especially over Zoom, be something that we fall into. So I think that A comes down to good induction and B, making sure that we're having those breakout groups and trying to encourage other people to speak. And Laura and I also had a good discussion with the high school students earlier this year about what they're interested in, yeah.
Thank you for that. You kind of gave me warm fuzzies thinking about that. And also just the thought that you've given clearly to how you run the group is great.
Kia ora, councillor Fitzsimons.
Yeah, since you're here and you've got six minutes and 20 seconds, what are the key issues that we should be thinking about for Wellington from a youth perspective at the moment? What's on top?
I think the stereotypical answers are transport, housing and mental health. And all of those are incredibly on top of the mind for all of us.
Some of us would like to afford to live, that'd be great. And if you could, if you could do something about that, that'd be excellent. Yeah, we'd also like to have wellbeing, if that can be arranged and maybe be able to get somewhere at some point, that'd be cool. Also, nice use of what's on top.
Yeah.
We do a thing, for those of you who haven't been to a youth council meeting, and you all should. We do a thing at the beginning called what's on top, where we all go around the table, youth councillors and council officers alike and talk about, you know, how we've been doing, what we've been doing. And I'm a heta fluff for making that cool pun.
Councillor Calvert.
Thank you. And also on top of my mind is diversity, diversity of thinking. And just thinking about our other advisory groups, you know, we think we've got the accessibility advisory group, environmental reference group and the Pacifica people, Pacifica advisory group. And as you may have heard, hopefully we'll have a, some form of ethnic advisory group. How do you, as a youth council, ensure that you, you know, you are representative of the Wellington community, sort of different ethnicities, you know, from the Rainbow community, relevant to the age group that you're representing?
We are very conscious of the fact that we cannot be, by nature of our limited size, by nature of our limited resources, we're very conscious of the fact that we cannot be considered a representative group. We're not, we are not and never can be perfectly representative of either the backgrounds or the views of all young Wellingtonians. That being said, and Ella can probably speak to this better than I can as chair, she's chair. We try to recruit as diversely as we can. We try to make ourselves as welcoming and as open a group as we can. And we make sure at every opportunity to urge officers and councillors to go further than just us. We've always maintained that youth council and advisory groups are not and can never be a substitute for representation on actual elected bodies and true diversity and inclusion there, as well as better engagement with the community. And we do our best, is what we do.
Yeah, definitely when it comes to recruitment, also ensuring that we can get our message out to as many communities as possible. Because I think in the past, it's been quite hard to find out about youth council and it's been sort of through word of mouth of friends. But if you're already in that circle, you're already engaged in a very particular group. So I think next year when we're doing recruitment, that's going to be a real big focus, is actually going out into different communities and trying to let them know about youth council and also make the application as accessible as possible. So not a big essay and CV, you know, necessarily. But that's always something to brainstorm as youth council. And another thing, as Jackson said, is just making sure that we're telling people, don't just see us as a be all, end all, don't just check the box and be, we'll talk to young people. Make sure that you're, you know, getting out into as many communities as well.
Are there any other partai councillors? Councillor Phone.
Yeah, mine is around council as a space and a place that you're huiing. And I'm assuming that you are here when you're huiing all the time, as our other groups are. I kind of, just while you've been talking and speaking about different groups, I've been thinking about zeal. And so I guess one of the opportunities is, have you got any opportunity to cross over with groups like that and share conversations with them? And is outreach a possibility without giving you another job to do?
We've done a little bit of work with a group called Te Ahionarangatahi. And that is based at BGI, which is in the city.
They're excellent.
In terms of previous things that we've done, Jackson can speak to that because he's been on youth council for longer than me.
So in terms of outreach, it's been a matter of resourcing. We've never... We've never had adequate resourcing to do any sort of significant community outreach. I think the last time we were able to do any sort of significant community outreach, we got, was it $11,000 for MYD?
The grant.
Yes. I look back to Mr Jack Marshall in the crowd there. And that was the only time we were able to actually go out into the community. And that's getting on three or five years ago now. We'd love to do more. We always would. And if you talk, I can't speak for any of the other advisory groups, but I suspect if you said, we want to give you more resourcing, we want to help you do more cool stuff, they'll say yes. And also in terms of making council a welcoming environment to be in, it's about the people you connect with. It's nice to know that whenever we come to SPC or to council or to any committee, there's always going to be a welcoming audience who wants to hear what we have to say. And also Shaun is excellent.
We've had lovely feedback from all the advisory groups about democracy.
Yeah, I mean, he's a former Youth Councillor, but it speaks to what I think PAG spoke about, that having council officers who understand what you're about makes the whole thing so much easier. And boom, we're out of time.
Well, Tina Koroa, thank you so much for coming in representing Youth Council and for participating in the review. We really appreciate that.
And thanks for moving this to five o'clock. We've been on a bit of a, actually put the meetings at a time when young people and people from diverse communities can come to them, sort of bent over the last year, and it's good that people are listening.
Ki'ora. Have a great New Years as well.
Yeah, well, thank you. And I did just want to say to all of our people here who have come to represent the various advisory groups, thank you so much to you for being here today, but to the rest of your groups, please do pass our greetings. And thanks, grateful thanks to the groups for the work that they do for council. We really appreciate that. And we do take feedback on whether this was maybe still a little bit too early. So it is important that you let us know what does make it accessible to the communities. There's always a bit of a trade-off with people wanting to get home as well. But, you know, we are open to feedback and we're trying to make sure that we are as accessible as possible to the groups. So thank you very much. So we are now going to move on to the paper. So I'd like to ask, and now I've got to remember who it is that's moving the paper, Councilor O'Neill. Councilor O'Neill is going to introduce the report on the advisory group model review.
Ki'ora, council and members of our advisory groups, it is with great pleasure and gift that I am able to present this paper today. And I want to start by acknowledging councillor Rebecca Matthews because she has been doing all the hard yards on this. And it has been of top priority and every time we've had a delay, every single time, I promise you, she's been there asking where, what's happening next. And to acknowledge your role in this as well, Rebecca, as well as sitting on AAG, has made her time to pretty much all of the advisory groups and has popped in to PAG for a couple of extra times as well. And I know that your service does not go unnoticed and I wanted to recognise that. Because I'm reading from a lot of your mahi as well. So this report, as many members of the advisory groups will understand, has taken a long time. So long that I submitted to it when I was on an advisory group before my time as a councillor. And now I get to see what it's like from the other side and add some of that shared experience with you on both, both two sides of the coin. But hopefully, you know, it's maybe not so much a coin, maybe like a sphere or a circle, because there's not really sides, but we try to share the same experiences. The main aim of the review was to both recognise and increase the value of the groups as we improve the way that we work together. And a large part of that is, the review started because a lot of members in advisory groups and some councils as well felt like we weren't properly recognising the mana of every individual and the, you each come with your own shared experience. You come with your own expertise, you come with kids, you come with 50-hour-a-week jobs, you come with large amounts of expertise behind you. And that properly wasn't being acknowledged, but also trying to find a stronger place and a more comfortable seat to sit on in that way. So I'm going to read some of the key findings. So there is an increased, aim to increase shared understanding of the purpose of groups and recognition while members come from and will always be connected to their communities, that they are there for their own skill set and lived experience. We recommend that the annual work plans will provide clarity and certainty for group members and officers. This will enable everybody to plan better, to make sure the groups are involved from the start of projects and then throughout. It will also ensure the groups can have further input into council priorities that are key for them. Incorporating Tiara Māori perspectives. The review has been long, but we know that already many relationships are clear and there is more consistency with projects being taken to groups earlier and enabling their advice to be incorporated, to be used of those for all that members attend. And then to the liaison officers, there's a special note here that Shaun and Heidi have done a fantastic job in your own leadership and taking on, as some members of the groups have mentioned earlier, but really taking the time to understand every group and their members and their wants and their needs. And then lastly, the report includes that we're already in a better position than when we started, that when practices tend to be embedded wider and the model of work will increase and grow with them. And that this will likely be more of a living document and hopefully enable more participation from each member. And then just to the end of my sort of speaking slot, I wanted to be a little bit selfish and talk about the group that I sit on, which is the Pacifica Advisory Group. And the love and the journey that the Pacifica Advisory Group has shared in efforts to acknowledge pretty much in every single presentation that we have had coming to that group, your voice has been represented in it. And then you've certainly tried to reach deep into your communities to make sure that that is seen and heard. We need more Pacifica voices and people around the table, as I'm sure with young people, with people with environmental expertise and particularly for, well, particularly for Pacifica and disabled people. I look at the people and I don't think that you should be on an advisory group. I think you should all be councillors. And that we're working towards getting more diversity at this table that we're sitting at. So it's not just something occasional. That I certainly have my own commitments and I know most councillors around this table are seeking further commitments to diversify our own table too, as we take a review into the advisory groups. For my first year as councillor, you have certainly enriched my own understanding of Pacifica values and opened my eyes to the Kapasa Report and the ways in which you move and roll in your own communities. I'm really proud of what Pacifica Advisory Group brings to the table and I wanted to thank you for being here. There are many great people here. I look across the gallery, I look across, roughly about 60 members of advisory groups have come through these corridors and made a difference. And every single person holds a particular, special perspective. Our role as councillors are to put a hand and be a champion for the communities in which we represent. And you each provide a really unique opportunity to bring perspectives that we as councillors cannot all entirely hold. And just to thank you and to note that we should be and will be continuing to champion more diversity at our own table as we continue to critique your own tables. So I'm going to leave that there and I'm going to pass it on back to the chair, but I think we have a few more amendments coming through.
We do. Ki'ora, so I understand fluff at Simons, Councilor Fitzsimons is going to second. Do you want him to speak?
Might reserve my right.
Okay, Ki'ora. So now I understand we have an amendment from councillor Matthews, which will be seconded by councillor Paul.
Ki'ora koutou. I might speak briefly to the whole paper and then move on to my amendment. I'd like to start with a quotation which applies to both my amendment and my thoughts about the advisory groups. And this is from Jane Jacobs. Cities have the capability of providing something for everybody only because and only when they are created by everybody. And I think that sums up to me the significance of these groups. I'd like to thank officers for all of their work, in particular Carolyn and Baz. It's a long process and I have been, I haven't been on here for some of it and I have been trying to hurry it along, but I've been having to get used to council time, which seems to be different, it's like dog years. But I'm still on outside time, I think. But, you know, the report gives us positive changes to help this model function even better. I'd also like to join councillor O'Neill, who spoke so beautifully, to thank all current and former members of advisory groups and all of the officers who support them so well. I think this is, it's a relatively small but significant way that our city can be more responsive to communities of interest. And my own experience with the Accessibility Advisory Group has been quite joyful and I was very touched to hear them say that things are getting better and they like it. So I definitely think that this report recommends more of a team approach. And that's when I think that our advisory groups are most successful, when it's the community, councillors, ELT members, democracy services, all working together in the interests of those communities. And I also would just quickly say that I think that councilors and council get out of advisory groups what they put into it. And that connecting with it and investing your time in it and listening to these people and getting to know them is a very valuable part of the process. All right, now I'd like to now move on to my amendment, which is that we establish an advisory group for our Rainbow communities. I do that in a response to a call, and I have to say repeated and regular calls, because again, they're not used to council time, they're used to outside time, that we do this. And while it's actually been the result of quite a long process that we've got to to get today. There were, in 2018, forums in the community that identified that they wanted to have continued meaningful involvement and they wanted an inclusive Rainbow Committee like Auckland Council has, an advisory panel, and noted that we're not homogeneous and we all have different stories, perspectives and agendas. And then I guess, so when I came on to council, I kind of, holding the Community Engagement Portfolio, was made contact with by a variety of organisations. And I want to acknowledge the persistence and positivity of Tabi, Mani, Kevin, Ahie and Kate in particular, who have been kind of pushing me, but they're also, you know, as they've written to you, working on behalf of a lot of organisations. So we're talking about Gender Minorities Aotearoa, Inside Out, Tina, Fana Fana, Trust Intersex, Trust Aotearoa, UNIQ Victoria, Outer Spaces, Massey Wellington UNIQ, S&amp;M's, the Wellington Pride Festival, Rainbow Wellington, Rainbow Haven NZ and Ivy. And I also want to acknowledge that they're not the whole community. And I want to acknowledge the thoughtful communication that I had from Amanda yesterday. We all had from Amanda. And actually, one great thing about the last couple of days is I've got to know her and hang out with her and hear her perspectives. So that, you know, that we're at the beginning point of this process. And that now, you know, if this amendment goes through, that we'll begin a conversation with the whole community about how this group should be formed, who should be on it, how we do that, what are the perspectives, the purpose of it. And I'm really looking forward to that happening. And I just want to thank everybody from the community that has kind of reached out to let me know. You know, that, I do apologise that for some it was a bit of a surprise that this was happening. But as I said, I might have given you a lemon, but let's make lemonade and vodka with it. I guess I just also want to let me look at my notes. Oh, the criteria for new groups. So I know that some people would like a longer process. But for these groups, they have been working to try and get a Rainbow group established, as I say, for about three years now. And they were told that, you know, and I've been telling them, that we had to wait for this review to be complete. So the reason I'm moving it today is because the review is complete and it doesn't actually show any barriers to establishing this group. And it reminds us of the criteria for establishing a new group, that there are members of the communities that council finds hard to get feedback from. And I definitely think that applies in this case. That council doesn't have an effective alternative channel to engage with these communities, which is also true. That members commit the time to meet over three-year terms and participate. And that the scale and cost of the group is achievable. And I think all of that is true about the Rainbow Communities Group. Just sorry, going through. I've got like, I've been writing on this paper all day, so. So yeah, so it has been a long process. I have tried to involve officers earlier in the process when the groups first approached me in December. And, but officers didn't want to engage with this community until the review had been complete. So, but, you know, I feel very strongly that a case has been made by this community, the plea has come from this community, that Auckland City Council has an effective existing group. And that it seems to me an obvious choice that we would do this for Wellington as well. And to, you know, address the serious issues that are facing these communities and, but also accept that offer of partnership, that they want to come in and help lead and help make us a better city for everybody. And look, I can see that if you all vote for this, that whatever it ends up being called, but the Rainbow Communities Advisory Group will probably be a highly sought-after advisory group that all councillors want to attend. And we just, you know, I think it's a really great opportunity for our city to do better for all of your communities and, you know, make a better and fairer city. Ki'ora.
Ki'ora, councillor Paul, would you like to speak? Your seconding?
Yeah, I mean, I think that was an excellent corero. So I don't have too much further to add apart from thanking you for coming in this morning and having a corero to us. And I think we're living in some really amazing times, just reflecting on Ricardo's speech yesterday in parliament, but also thinking about Elizabeth Kere Kere and all of the work that Elizabeth has done. And I actually met with Elizabeth and Kevin at the start of my, well, our triennium. So I want to thank you for all of the mahi that you do to keep us informed, even though I feel like we don't do as much as we can to appreciate the wealth of knowledge and value that you give to us and that you add to our community here in Wellington. So basically, when I saw the request come through, I just looked at the list of names and I just knew that it was totally worthy of supporting. You know, Ahie, you, Tabi, who I've been able to, you know, work alongside you on so many kopapa now for a number of years. Kevin, of course, and Viv as well, who does the amazing frills kopapa as well. But basically, I just wanted to say that I see you and that we see you and we see the work that you do tirelessly for the Rainbow and Takatapui communities. We're keen to totoku you, whatever you see fit and whatever you need to feel seen, to feel valued, to feel included and to feel safe. And I hope that that really shows here today. So yeah, ngamahinui kiakoto.
Councilor Fitzsimons.
Yeah, I just want to strongly support this as well and start by thanking councillor Matthews for your leadership on this. I know that when you were first elected in October, you were like, right, how do we get a Rainbow Advisory Group? What do we do? And I know that you've pushed quite hard to get to where we are today and that you graciously accepted the various pieces of wisdom from officers around. You just need to wait, just let it go through, but there's a process. And that's why we've sort of culminated in where we've got to today. And I guess, I think the background of this is the commitment of, I think, two previous mayors of Wellington who wanted to see this happen. So it has had a long gestation and I think it is about Wellington being an inclusive city where Rainbow communities actively participate in decision-making. And believe me, we need all the help we can get. Because we actually genuinely won't make the best decisions for Wellington unless your voice is heard. And that's what this is really about. And I personally do feel an indirect part of the Rainbow community is the mum of a trans boy. And I've had nothing but a feeling of support and love and wisdom and kindness from everyone in the Rainbow community. And I want to particularly acknowledge Mani, who's been a role model to me and very kind and very supportive. And I think that- And I think that the Rainbow community and many of those active in it have paved the way for people like my eight-year-old trans boy to be able to reach his full potential. And by getting your voice, all of your collective voices round the table, I think that we are going to be able to build a more inclusive and better Wellington. So I just want to thank you and acknowledge Amanda as well, who's had an influential part of this as well and has been very generous with her time and wisdom with both Rebecca and I today. And, you know, we really want to acknowledge that. And as we've said, this is just the beginning. So we're going to take, hopefully, if this recommendation passes, we're going to take this and build a really effective and influential advisory group that will actually mean better decisions are made for Wellington. Because as you've heard from the ones that we have, that we already have, they do make a difference. And there is a role for those advisory groups in compensating for a lack of knowledge around this table. So it's a very important part of our legitimacy as a democratic organisation.
Councillor Sparrow. Oh, getting a bit emotional. Councillor Sparrow.
Okay, it is important to have a plan. We heard that in our debate late this morning. And developing a master plan, a grand design, if you like, is, in my view, preferable to adding or subtracting advisory groups on an ad hoc basis. I believe that at this stage, we should be requesting officers to review the current mix of advisory groups and to consider further possible advisory groups, such as the one or ones being proposed, because I think there is possibly more than one in the mix at the moment, before we give the go-ahead to any more advisory groups. And some groups may well meet the criteria to be established as an advisory group. But I believe we need to, we need a review to determine whether, in fact, that is the case. It is all about good planning. And that would mean a more thorough understanding of what we're proposing doing, rather than adding further advisory groups on an ad hoc or possibly uninformed basis. So I'm not comfortable voting in favour of more advisory groups without such a review. And I wish to foreshadow an officer-supported amendment along those lines.
Do you have a second for your foreshadowed amendment, just so that we're aware of the practicality of it?
I believe councillor Young.
Cool, thank you. Not, so when, yeah, but I don't want to confuse people. So we're not debating the foreshadowed amendment now. I'm just pointing this out because councillor Young is next on the speaking order and I don't want her to think she's speaking to the foreshadowed amendment. So when we have a foreshadowed amendment, councillor Sparrow has told us what the theme of it is, but we don't debate that now, we debate the original amendment. And then if the original amendment fails, then we move straight to the foreshadowed amendment. Just so everyone understands the process and doesn't get confused and speak to the wrong thing. So councillor Young, you're speaking to the main amendment.
First of all, I just first of all say that I'm only here for about another five minutes. So it may be that I won't be here able to second it.
Possibly won't be able to, yeah.
Yeah, so that's a little alert. So yes, I would like to speak. So first of all, I'd just like to thank Rebecca for all the work she's put into this. And I have to discuss with Rebecca because I can't support this amendment. And the reason is I am concerned about the scattergun approach to advisory groups. And I do think we need to have, I hate this word, one of the many words I hate, we need to have a strategy. You know, what do they actually achieve? What are they supposed to achieve? Are they useful? And which ones should we be having? So that we have a comprehensive look across all the various sectors and have very clear terms of reference. I know some people want, I know Diane wants a multicultural one, others want one for seniors. I thought we could have one for the silent majority. They'll be very short meetings, but just a thought. It was a joke, by the way. So one of my concerns, one of my concerns is that we're always adding services, but we're never taking anything away. And at the same time, we have really quite scary rates increases coming through and we have to look very carefully at our spending. So I just, I just feel that this is a little bit ad hoc. So that's why we need to look at the whole sector, because advisory groups do cost money. And so for these reasons, I can't support it, but I do commend Rebecca for her work. You know, this is a terrific, terrificly important section of Wellington's community. That's why I'm very proud to be on the Pride Parade Board. There, it's a section of Wellington that I knew bits of, I know it better now. And it's an important part of our city, but I can't support this group. That's it.
Kewa, councillor Conde, would you like to speak to the amendment?
Thank you, Kewa. And I just wanted to talk about essentially why I'm going to support this and why I think it's really important that we have a Rainbow group here. And councillor Fitzsimons talked about the gaps in our knowledge and lived experience at this table, which I think is really important. I love that it's called the Rainbow Group, but I wanted to talk a bit about the LGBTQI+ label and just talk about the issue that the further we get along, that alphabet, the less that most people actually know about what those letters actually stand for. And the less that councillors might understand about what the specific needs of those communities are. And, you know, I wanted to talk about the, some of the groups such as asexuality, gender fluid and gender non-binary people who fit into that plus space, that I think by bringing this advisory group together, we can actually bring some of those Rainbow communities, the parts of the Rainbow community that maybe don't get as much profile, that maybe we are a bit more marginalised and we don't hear so much from them. So that we know that we actually are understanding what those specific challenges are for those specific groups in our city. I think that's, it's a really important thing that the advisory group will allow us to do. And I just want to acknowledge the comments from councillor Matthews about that you've been waiting a while and how long this review took to get to this point. And that's, you know, we're not debating councillor Sparrow's amendment, but just saying that I don't think you should have to wait any longer. And that while I agree with councillor Young's concerns about our rates rises and spending, that these are relatively small amounts of money for what I think can be a really important outreach for these communities in our city who need to feel included and welcome. Kewa.
Who's next? Oh, me. Who's next? Me. So I'm going to speak to this amendment and support. I don't think this is a scattergun approach at all. I think this is about responding to a call from the community and it is a political decision as to the fact that we want representation, that is true for our city and that it is a voice that we haven't heard enough from. So I don't believe it's scattergun and I don't believe we need a review to tell us that we need this. I don't think a review is going to tell us anything different. We will come back to the situation of knowing that we need to improve our representation. And actually, we know that the representation around this table improves when we have better interaction with communities at council level. So I completely support this and I would like to acknowledge the communities who have come forward today to ask for this. And I know that it has been in the making for a long time. I remember last triennium, you know, Justin was really keen to see this happen. And the community has worked closely with previous mayors. And I think it's important that we show that we hold that line, that we are supportive. We've done things in the city to show we're supportive, but the right step is to make sure that that voice is close and that is at this table, talking to us and helping inform our strategies. As we heard from our advisory groups earlier, advising early on, not at the end, not coming as a public submitter and saying, you guys have forgotten about us. Early on, engagement where we can hear of the experiences of other people that we don't have at this table when we are debating papers. So I absolutely totoku this and I would like to thank councillor Matthews for her drive and vision. So thank you very much for doing this. Councillor Pannett.
She's just getting to her non-mute button, the mute button, I think. Oh, headphones, is it? It's all right, we can be patient. It's not quite, you're still muted.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Now you're right now, good.
Sorry about that, I hit the wrong button. Look, I am really proud to be supporting two of these amendments today for new groups. So I won't be supporting the amendment. I think it's very easy to say, you know, when you're not a member of a group, that you shouldn't have a say and I don't think we should be getting in the way of that. I think if people want a place to speak from, then that should be strongly supported. So whilst councillor Sparrow, I do understand your intent, just to point out that there's been lots of discussion over a long period of time about the need to increase some of those perspectives. So it's not, I wouldn't say it was entirely ad hoc. And I thought this morning, we got a really strong challenge about how representative, how diverse, how much action we're actually really taking on very serious issues. And I thought it was good that we were collectively challenged. I thought it was very healthy. And so it will be a great pleasure to vote for amendment that's coming up too. So thank you councillor Matthews and Calvert for your leadership. I think it can only make Wellington stronger.
Kewa, councillor Phone.
Kewa, Tato, just briefly from me, but I will be supporting this amendment. I do want to thank councillor Matthews for the mahi that you have done in bringing this to us today. And yeah, but actually, just, I have two beautiful children at Wellington High. And Wellington High is such an inclusive school that young people from all over the region come to this school because they feel included. And what happens when you see these kids mucking in together, where diversity is totally accepted and normalised? It is just such a beautiful thing. And I do agree with you councillor Pannett. It is a great thing, it'll only make Wellington stronger, so I'm keen to get on with this. Thank you for talking me through that process, councillor Matthews.
Sorry, we're just having conversations about how amendments work. So we are now up to write of reply. Oh, Terry, sorry. Sorry, sorry, you went on the list and you needed to be, thank you. People are looking out for each other, it's good.
Kewa councillors, I'll just be, I'll try and be brief. I'm really happy to support this amendment today because I know that it's something that our community's been talking about for a very long time. I am a councillor that identifies as queer. And back in 2018, Justin Lester and the council hosted a queer council hui that had internal staff and external staff. And one of the brilliant beauties of that was we went through. And a lot of the people in the gallery were able to attend that as well. And it was the start of, start of something new. And those relationships were really important. And I'm looking through those notes from a few years ago and understanding the relationships and the warmth that was in that room at that time and trying to remember some of the outcomes that we looked at was acknowledging that town is not a safe space for us. It wasn't in 2018 and at least personally, me and amongst my friends, it still doesn't feel like it's as safe as it can be. And we also know that people within the Rainbow group are much more likely to experience violence and some other things as well. We know that there is a lack of inclusive housing. We know that there is a lack of safe nights, that there's a lack of safe centres and services. And these are all things that council provides and provides for and designs around. But I'm a really strong believer that nothing can be done about us without us at the table. And that's a lot of the way that our own strategies reflect when we're dealing with homelessness and other sectors as well. So to me, it just seems common sense. One of the key listings in the wrap-up of that hui was that there was a worry and a fear that this could just be all talk, it could just be all hot air. But that, an ambition was to have an ongoing hui or a rupu to continue to have those conversations, to continue challenging those things. And I've seen their own value in sitting with advisory groups this year and their influence on the Wellington wellbeing strategy, the Wellington Night Forum and things like the way we design our culture and centre spaces as well. And I want to acknowledge that there's a lot of really awesome valuable stuff that our community already does. Wellington has acknowledged parts of Rainbow history through history walks, through traffic lights, through acknowledging of Carmen's story and some specific venues as well. And I'd love to see that more widely known without the institution. So I'm really pleased to support this today and to acknowledge councillor Paul, your mahi on this as well, and everybody that's taken time to have a koriro around it. Particularly Amanda as well, your fakaro, and to everybody who keeps showing up at our council table telling us we're not doing good enough and to keep laying out that challenge time and time again. So thank you and I really appreciate it. And I do really hope that this gets through. But if it doesn't get through, then we'll find another way and we'll make it work. But yeah.
Be good so far. Mia Foster.
Just unmute myself. Look, thank you very much. I just want to say a few things just very briefly. First of all, I wanted to thank the submitters going all the way back to this morning. And also wanted to say that I've really enjoyed the engagement, particularly with councillor Young, with Amanda and the members of the Pride Parade. But also with some of the other members of the Rainbow community, which I really appreciated. I want to thank councillor Matthews for raising this issue today. I think actually it is the right time to raise it. We've got the report back now about the groups we've got at the moment. So I think it's perfectly appropriate. And I think the way in which you've raised it too is appropriate to say, look, we agree with this in principle. Obviously, there's a fair bit of work to do in terms of how it will be set up, you know, meeting frequency, how people get appointed to it, all those kind of things. And I think that will be the same too for, I know councillor Calvert's looking to raise a similar amendment in respect of the ethnic community. And I think both of these, for me, it's about us being more inclusive. And I think that that's something we are generally very, very proud of in Wellington. And I think we should be supporting these, both of these propositions. I'm, just the one other thing, and I do want to pick up what councillor Young has said about the cost of everything that we do. And I am deeply conscious of that as well. And I do think as we work our way through this, we should be thinking about how it is that we can manage to reduce the impulse that these collectively all put on the council. Maybe that's around meeting frequency and the, but anyway, it's something which I do think we need to be able to. So I look very happy to support and I will have to duck out after this vote. But I will also support the amendment, which I understand councillor Calvert has brought to the table.
Kewa, we are now to the right of reply. Thank you councillor Matthews.
I'll be brief because it's late, late o'clock. I just, first of all, I want to thank everybody for their contributions and particularly for sharing your own sort of stories and reflections about this. I do reject the notion that this is ad hoc. I think we're elected to lead. And I was reflecting on the decision that we made this morning around Tingako Civic Square, where we were like, city's looking to us to, you know, do things. And this is another, we could do another thing today. So, and I also, you know, the thing that I would hate the most is to complete a review and immediately start another review. You know, that we have kind of cleared the pathway for this, that we've established this model is effective and the things that we need to do to make it more effective. That's a great starting point for a conversation about this new group. And again, I just want to thank you for, this is really very little to do with me. It's all about the community and all of the people in Wellington who are part of these communities. And the conversation just getting started. Kewa.
Kewa, let's vote. Just trying to find my voting devices. So councillors, you know how to vote? Need to tell you? No. We will take a division on this. Do you want us to use our thumbs or do you want us to use that emoticon thing? Thumbs. Two up, one down. Okay, so that's carried. And what we're going to do now, we do still have another amendment, I understand. But we're just going to have like a two or three minute stretch in Faripaku because we have been sitting for a while and I'm aware that we need to look after our tinana. So we'll be back in a few minutes.
Thank you, Jono. I'll duck out now.
That councillor Wolf is seconding. So councillor Calvert, if you'd like to introduce your amendment.
Thank you. Well, as you know, I'm moving this amendment to a, in a very similar vein to the Rainbow Advisory Group as an ethnic advisory group. And this is something that is well overdue. I've been wanting to sort of see some structured way of council engaging in a strategic way with our ethnic communities, basically since I've been on council for the last four years. And because of the engagement I do with a lot of the ethnic communities, and in particular the Multicultural Council of Wellington, and also the other groups that I've come to know and be part of, in particular ECTA. As per the Rainbow community, there are many facets to our ethnic communities. The groups I've just mentioned are key, but there are other groups. And we know there are challenges in making sure that you've got an advisory group that is as representative as it can be, but knowing that you can't represent everyone. And I think the Youth Council also commented along those lines as well. I was really heartened to hear from the Pacific Advisory Group, they acknowledged challenges, but also what they'd learned about what makes a group more successful. And I think a lot of those lessons learned can equally be applied to when we set up an ethnic advisory group. And this is, as our submitter said this morning, you know, other urban councils have such a group, Auckland, Christchurch, Hamilton. They take slightly different forms, so it's whether it's an advisory group, or panel, or committee. But basically, those councils do have a structured way of engaging with their ethnic communities. I know there's been some concerns about the Multicultural Council of Wellington and what might happen there with our relationship. I think our relationship will still be strong with them. They conduct a lot of complementary activities, and there can't just be one group representing ethnic communities. We need to make sure that we are as inclusive as possible. I agree with councillor Sparrow. Ideally, it would have been a much more fair and inclusive approach to take a more comprehensive review across all our advisory groups. And to be honest, I thought that that was what the intention of the review was. I know it was set up a couple of years ago, and I had hoped that we would also be looking at what sort of advisory groups we needed going forward in the future, having said that I knew there was a distinct gap in the ethnic space. But it hasn't happened. We're now two years down the track since, I think, or nearly two years since that review kicked off, and we've got the results of it. And as councillor Matthews said, what are we going to do, another review? Which may be possible for other advisory groups, but I think we're quite clear. We voted to support a Rainbow Advisory Group, and for the very same reasons we need an ethnic advisory group. And it has been talked about for some time. And we used to have, on council apparently, well before my time, an ethnic advisory officer. But that role was disestablished and never really replaced. And even on the Multicultural Council, which is a separate entity, it's not one of our formal advisory groups, myself and councillor Day are representatives on that, but we go as councillors. We don't have any officer support, we don't have any resources, so our role there is limited to being a bit of just a conduit. I know the first time, I know the last time when most of us campaigned, you know, we did campaign on a more inclusive and tolerant society, and ensuring council services are fit for all groups within our city. And it's become even more relevant since the horrendous events of March 2019. And it was probably great timing, because we've had that Royal Commission of Inquiry results released this week, and the government gave an immediate swift response. And in fact, what they've done is they've set up a Ministry of Ethnic Affairs, rather than it just being office within the Department of Internal Affairs. So they're taking this very seriously and understanding that, you know, we need, as our submitter say, to do more to build interfaith harmony across our city and across our country. We've got to be very careful of just not focusing our efforts on tokenism and just turning up at events and eating the food, which is great. It's always, I love it. But, you know, we actually, we have to walk the talk. You know, we can't just say, we really value you, we really thank you for adding to the culture of our city, to the vibrancy of our city, and yet we don't provide a structured way of engaging on those key issues that we're determining on our city's plans and Somebody I've come to know through the Multicultural Council, as a very impressive young person, good admirer that I've come to know, and he did comment, just reading his words, is Wellington is missing out on the untapped potential of its migrant communities in the fight to revive its post-COVID economy. So this is not just a social or cultural aspect, this is actually an economic aspect for our city. We need to tap into that potential of our migrant communities. We want them to feel home in our city, included, and we want to retain their talent. So I know the communities have been waiting a while patiently, but I think times come where we actually need to put our words into action and to enable those communities to actually help fill the gaps in knowledge and experience that we have about having a refugee background, being a migrant, having, you know, a different faith to what is traditionally, you know, the Christianity faiths in New Zealand. So I'm given the speeches in the previous amendment, and I think you can almost replicate them and just change the advisory group. I'm hoping for your support, and councillor Wolf will be seconding it. Councillor Wolf, would you like to speak?
Thank you councillor Calvert. I absolutely do support this amendment, and I also congratulate councillor Matthews for her initiative as well. This is time, and it's also time, to consider our ethnic communities as well. And especially, this is a difficult time in the world. And one of the great things about Wellington is that we do come together really well in adversity, but it takes adversity sometimes to connect us. And we should be connected all the time, we really should. The relationships should be strong all the time, and we are a small enough city that we should really be a community that is together and on the same wavelength. I know from personal experience and having experienced antisemitism, for instance, with the cemetery in Makra, where 90 graves got desecrated, including my father's grave, and that the prayer house got taken out. I know that the first community that was there for us was the Muslim community, and we for them as well. And I also empathise with our Rainbow community and other minorities also. I think you heard today also from members of the ethnic community as to how they would like to be more involved with our city. And, you know, I've seen over the last 20 years in particular, you know, the influx of refugees, and councillor Calvert mentioned it, where, you know, they've been welcomed into our city, and we welcomed them at the start, and now, through an ethnic advisory group, we can go some steps further. And I think that that would be a really great thing. We've seen some really great ethnic leaders stand up, and, you know, just recently, they have, there's been an amazing speech in Parliament, in fact. And we have this ability to empower and unleash people, and I think that through supporting this initiative of councillor Calvert's, I think that it is important. I do emphasise the fact that when we vote for this, and I hope you will, and it's similar with the Rainbow Advisory Group, we've raised expectations, and we have to undertake the responsibilities of those raised expectations. And I want to pay tribute at this stage to Brian Hannah, who passed away five years ago, who ran the, he was the executive leadership team leader, who was responsible for our advisory groups, and a wiser person that you could not have. And at a stage, I was looking to have an aged advisory group. And Brian said, just at the moment, Simon, we don't have the resource in council to be able to do that properly. He said that you could get it going, but it wouldn't be the right way to go, and we can do other things, and we can try and empower our aged through other mechanisms. And I think that we have done that, and in doing that, we haven't actually lessened the effect of the advisory groups that we have got. So I don't want to see us moving forward and then not by, you know, we've got to do this properly and in good faith, and I think that that's something that's really important. And the last thing that I want to say is that respect, this is about respect. You know, it's about respect for all the peoples in Wellington. And I think that, you know, as leaders, we have that obligation to stand up. You know, like, I was so proud yesterday when two international football teams walked off the field at a UEFA game because an official, that must have been, an official was racist in a comment, that must have been tremendously hard to do, but they stood up and they were upstanders, not bystanders. And I think that that's what we've achieved, part of that today, and I think in supporting an ethnic advisory group, we'll go some way more to being upstanders. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Conde, councillor Fitzsimons, you want to speak?
Yeah, I want to thank councillor Calvert for bringing this amendment, and also I know that she did do work on the advisory group review when she held the engagement portfolio. And I'm still sort of deciding what my position is on this, mainly because I sent you what I thought was quite a constructive email, asking for some responses, and what you came back with was a criticism of me for doing something different. And I was a bit disappointed that that was your approach. I'm also not very comfortable with the language of tolerance, because tolerance does not denote acceptance. It sounds like more of a reference to a situation where you're dealing with something you must go along with, but you don't genuinely accept. And I think we have moved on to being an inclusive city, and aiming to be an inclusive city in every way possible. So I guess I want to hear what the view of the Multicultural Council is on this, what their response was, how they were engaged with on it, what you sort of discussed with them. I know it was raised, I think briefly at the last meeting perhaps, and what the impact will be on their events and how we're kind of going to manage that, and is there, you know, is there a plan around that? Because I know that they do do, they really pride themselves in the events that they run, and I guess I'm quite interested in how that might work, how the, you know, approach to membership would differ. Would you imagine the two carrying on, or would there be, you know, would there be one that sort of operated and another one that didn't? Basically, how, those sorts of things, how we would work out. And I appreciate that some of those need to be worked through, but I guess I was trying to be constructive in my email to you, and I would appreciate a response on that and you write a reply.
Councillor Sparrow.
Actually, I should start, yeah, by thanking officers for all the work that is done behind the scenes in terms of doing and throwing and sorting out the wording for amendments, and, yeah, it's quite a thankless role, I'm sure. As I've already indicated, there may well be merit in adding these additional advisory groups to our mix, a huge amount of merit, in fact. But I am still not comfortable in voting in favour of adding more groups without a good look at the overall picture. I've already said this, I think it's important to review which groups, particularly those still outside the fold, so to speak, should be established as advisory groups, and which ones might be set up possibly in a different way, using a different mechanism. So until we do that, I'll say again, I'm very hesitant in supporting the addition of further groups, including this one.
Councillor Conde.
Kiara, thank you. I just wanted to start by talking about, perhaps a little bit flippantly, but the experience of being a migrant coming to this country as a six-year-old, and being incredibly fortunate to speak the language, so it wasn't as much of a culture shock, but having no idea what tomato sauce was, and thinking that it really wasn't as good as ketchup. And those challenges that you have of being so far away from home and wanting to be able to connect back with your culture, and being able to have those connections are really important. I remember, this is of course way before the internet, and even before Sky Television, let me take you back to the olden days, people. You know, my family went on a road trip up to a motel, I think in Palmerston North, that had an enormous satellite dish, so that we could watch the Super Bowl. Because for my brother, who was a teenager at the time, like, being able to connect back to that really simple thing was actually a really important thing for him. And I think, you know, this idea of having some kind of group where our ethnic communities can come together and we can support them, and how they contribute to the city, but also support them in how they maintain those links back to those cultures that they come from that are really important. I also had a chat on the train this morning with a lovely hijabi woman who's coming into the city, she's moved here from Egypt with her family, and, you know, the challenges that she's faced in coming here, and that she shouldn't just feel safe here, which she absolutely should, but she should feel welcome here. You know, she should feel welcome and included in our city. And I think whatever we can do to make that happen is really important, and of course, in the context of the Christchurch shooting, things that we all already felt were important went to a new level. All of that said, I want to come back to your comment, councillor Wolf, that we should do this properly and in good faith and with respect. And I guess my concern about this is that I haven't heard from the Multicultural Council about how they feel about this, whether they support it or if they have any reservations. We have heard from some community groups this morning, but not very many. And I just am not sure that this is actually what they want. I worry a lot, as a Pakeha person, that I don't want to come into these communities and tell them what they should want, or tell them what the solution should be. And I think when PAGs spoke, when the people from the Pacific Advisory Group spoke about the challenges that they faced, they spoke about them really upbeat, because they've gotten on top of them now, but I think that they are very real challenges. They talked about the 20 different island groups that they had to work with, the cultural nuances and differences they had to work through. And I think I don't underestimate the challenge of setting up a new group like this. So all of those things are also kind of weighing on my mind at this point. So, you know, as I said to you councillor Calvert, I was considering supporting this, but I would have preferred something softer, because I think, you know, we had a lot of conversation in Cordado about the Rainbow Group, about how long the process has been going on, for three years, and there's been a lot of community support, and community asking for it, and community who were here tonight to ask for it. So I just feel like something, I absolutely agree in principle, but something that's a bit softer and a bit slower, to give those communities time to come to us, to come together, and to talk about what they actually, what they want. And so I'm just going to foreshadow that if this amendment fails, that I'll be bringing an amendment that would look at setting up a process like that. Kiara.
Kiara, so I understand you have a second there, and I'm happy to speak to this now as well. So I just want to acknowledge councillor Calvert for her leadership with the multicultural groups in Wellington over the last four years now. And also I want to acknowledge councillor Gilbert, who took on that role last trainee, and both have built really strong relationships in the communities, and I think it's important to acknowledge that. Councillor Calvert did talk to the Multicultural Council on Wednesday night, and did a good job of explaining to them the opportunity. The only challenge was, unfortunately, that you couldn't be there at the end, and they did have questions, and there was some confusion in what would it mean for them. And so I guess from my perspective today, I just feel very nervous about setting up a process and train when the groups haven't all had a chance to really have a good conversation about it. We've heard from the Rainbow community, there has been a longstanding conversation in much detail, and this situation is different. In this situation, it does sound quite prescriptive, given the challenges that we haven't been able to talk to the communities and work out how they will manage representation. There are many facets of faith and ethnicity that we need to make sure that we address, you know, carefully and with sensitivity. So I would prefer to support something that is a little bit more being community-constructed, rather than us prescribing what we think is right. And it is really important that we hear from the Multicultural Council, because whilst it's not a part of council, it is the group that we do communicate with at the moment. And I would like to just acknowledge too that our engagement team have been thinking about and have been working in recent times with the Multicultural Council, and looking at how they can support and going to the community to be able to work in with that. But I also want to acknowledge that there are other communities that maybe don't feel part of the Multicultural Council, and it's important that we consider how we're going to work with all communities, and I think that's something we always need to continue to work on. And I want to acknowledge councillor Wolf's comments as well about doing this properly and in good faith, and I feel, I don't feel comfortable that I'm doing it in good faith without having heard in person at this meeting from the group that we do currently work with. I feel that they will feel confused and a bit concerned that we maybe are working around them. And the worst thing we could do is to cause division through this process. So at the moment, you know, we're wanting to bring communities together, and I know that today, you know, there's been lots of conversation about that, there's been a lot of work done to try and bring communities together, and I think it's really important that we continue to do that. And I do want to acknowledge the challenges that the earlier submitters did put to us, you know, and I want to acknowledge the work that both the ECTA community and the interfaith community do to support a huge number of people. And I agree that at the moment, it's really tough, because the only way that they can really get interaction is by lobbying councillors that they know, and that's not good enough, that's not the way that we need to be engaging with groups which provide a lot of support out in our community as well. So I think it's really important that we build this together, and I would like to see something, and councillor Calvert herself acknowledged that there are different models, that all the councils have different models, I'd love to understand a bit more about them. We're talking about a huge number of ethnic groups in our city alone, and how do we make sure that we get good representation? Because what we know is sometimes processes can end up being weighted towards, you know, majority groupings and that sort of thing. So I want to make sure that we are getting really strong representation, that people have confidence that their voices will be heard. And I think it's important to also acknowledge that this process is very much, I'm wanting to see this move forward, and I do want to see us establish some sort of multicultural forum, advisory group, whatever it is, I want to see that happen, but I don't want to state that it's an advisory group, because I can see issues with limitations of size. As we hear from Pacific Advisory Group, that's a much smaller number of nations that are coming together to try and work together, and already, you know, that that has posed challenges at times, so I can see that there are some challenges we need to work through and address, and I want to do it with the community, I can see power in that. Would anyone else like to speak to the amendment? No? Okay, so we'll vote on this amendment now. Oh, sorry, councillor Calvert, you can have a write a reply, absolutely.
Well, there's been a number of comments made, and to be honest, I'm actually quite disappointed, because, you know, we talked about we don't need another review. And what I think I'm hearing is people want to kick this can down the road. Now, if you look at the recommendation, and it was like the Rainbow one, is agree in principle to the establishment. Now, it might be called an advisory group, it may be called a reference group, we said with the Rainbow community, it could be called something different. It's about working with those communities about how it's going to work. The terms of references that we've got for each of our current advisory groups are all slightly different. And we also, you know, we direct officers to work with these communities to enable this. So that work, it needs to happen at some point, so this is what's going to be happening. We saw division in the Rainbow, we've heard about division in the Rainbow community, but we know that's going to be worked through. We don't, when you voted just previously for a Rainbow Advisory Group, you didn't have a terms of reference in front of you. You know, what we've done is instruct officers to go away and work with that community to figure it out. We don't know how quickly it's going to go, whether there's going to be any challenges, and it's the same with the ethnic advisory group. And I just, you know, counsel you all to think about what this is going to look like to our ethnic communities. Now, in terms of the Multicultural Council, they, you know, I don't know whether you're all aware, but there's multicultural councils all through the country, in Christchurch, in Auckland, they coexist with council advisory groups. And when I, I have been in communication with the president of the Multicultural Council, and I'll just find that email, because I, will you just give me a moment? Can't find it. But essentially, they need a time to go away and think about what their views were on it, because obviously, the Multicultural Council is made up of representatives from, you know, across a number of ethnicities. And I did check, and so they do need a time, but then that's why we are enabling, we're directing officers to work with the ethnic communities and to recommend some funding. So there's six months to do this work, it's not, you know, if we can't get this sorted in six months, we'll never get it done. So there is time to do this under this, we're not prescribing the how, who will be on it, we're not prescribing how it will work, because that's all to be determined. But what I do know is, and then the officers, I'm sure, will be working with the Multicultural Council. In terms of their events, I'm sure they'll still be doing their events. It's just like the Pride Parade will still be being organised, we're not expecting the Rainbow Advisory Group to be now the organisers of the Pride Parade. So those events will still happen. So the Multicultural Council will still, as it does now, it's like any other community group, it applies to council for grant-to-run events. It doesn't get a blanket set of funding to do certain things, because it is an independent organisation to council. So this, having an ethnic advisory group will enable us in a way to help bring a lot of the ethnic communities together, make sure that we are including the different faiths, because often that's associated with the ethnic communities, but they do want to see action. And I just remind you of the horrible event in March 2019. You know, that's over 18 months ago, and what have we, what have we as a council done? So we need to actually put a stake in the ground, we need to say we want to establish a group. If council officers do need more time, then I'm sure they'll come back to us, just like we had the discussion about the mob, you know, when we said, you know, about where would council officers, where the main office will be. Somebody commented, well, if it doesn't work, they'll come back to us. So I'm sure there's an opportunity, there's an off-ramp. So enabling this without softening it enables the work to get done now, and so that we can say, come March, two years after that massacre, in March, that we will have some way going forward. So I do look for your support, I understand the concerns, but I say those concerns are no different to what we've got with the Rainbow community, and we're an organisation that should overcome these challenges. So thank you, and thank you for the questions. And, yeah, so I do look forward to your support, and if you want to water it down, then that's up to you. Thank you.
So we're going to vote now, and, yeah, open for voting. So we're going to vote now. And yeah, open for voting. Sorry, Tera, yours hasn't worked. Has the battery died? Did you water on it? Oh, yeah, it worked. Okay, so that has failed, which means we can now go to the foreshadowed amendment.
Can I just, a quick adjournment, just to check the wording with officers, which I haven't actually had a chance to do before.
So over to councillor Conde to introduce her foreshadowed amendment now.
All right, thanks everyone. I won't belabour this since we've had a really good debate about this already. Just the wording here is to acknowledge that we definitely want to do something with the multicultural community. We absolutely think that that's a really important thing for us to do. But that we don't want to specify whether it should be an advisory group or some other kind of forum. You know, I think it's really important that the communities have a chance to engage at this point and really be able to talk to each other and to us about what they're hoping to get out of this and how that should work for them. So I don't agree with the notion that we've watered this down. But I think we have, this still shows a strong commitment to wanting to work with the multicultural community and ethnic communities going forward. But I think we all have, are in violent agreement that this is a really important part of our community who deserve to be heard and included. And so I just want to thank everyone. I'll wrap it up. Councillor Foon was going to second.
Would you like to speak councillor Foon?
Yeah, Kia ora. And I do just want to acknowledge councillor Calvert for all the work that you've done with the Multicultural Council and for bringing this amendment today. And really, we are right behind you, but we just, it feels right to me to just take a step back and really hear from the communities what will work for them and how they want to do it. So that they are the ones telling us how it can work for them. I think that's really important. So yes, I'll second this and thank you councillor Conde for bringing it.
And I'll just speak quickly to this. And thank you councillor Conde for this amendment. For me, it fits with the way that I've approached the Manu Fenua seats at the table, that I wanted to make sure that the communities are doing it with us, we're not doing it to communities. And that is the difference between the last amendment that we passed was that the community had been working constructively with council over a long period of time. In this situation, we need more time to be able to do that. And we need to make sure that we are clear that the communities have had a chance to have a say. And there are so many things that we can gain from working with our multicultural communities across Wellington. And I really see this as a really excellent opportunity to do this. But again, I just, I think council is quite good at doing things to communities. And I think we need to make sure that we're doing with, and that we don't, as I said before, cause division through the process. And I really appreciate that. It may feel like it was a bit, that it was a watering down, but to me, it's not. This is actually about empowering and allowing that community voice to come through. We heard from a community member about the challenges that we're not really thinking about our city from an economic perspective, from those communities. That was something that we hadn't heard publicly before. And I think we need to make sure that we are open to whatever might come out and that there's plenty of opportunity here to be flexible. And so I think that's really, really important. So thank you to councillors for bringing that forward. Would anyone else like to speak to this amendment? Councillor Calvert.
Thank you. So they'll bring a report back to us by June 2021. That's great. Exactly what was probably would have happened on the previous amendment. Because you would have to have a report back, you'd have to have a terms of reference back. So what we're going to do is we might, we'll get a report back which might say potentially do this or potentially don't do that. So it's exactly pretty much the same thing. So again, I think the way this has gone about, I'm really disappointed with everyone sitting across the table from me. And so, look, I will support it because something is better than nothing. But you yourself, your actions have watered this down. And, you know, I'm feeling for the ethnic communities out there. Because what this is saying is we don't have to work quite so, you know, we don't have to put so much of a priority to working with you as we would have done. As we, you know, and you've given priority to the Rainbow community over the ethnic communities. And that's the way I feel. And I think that is what the ethnic communities will feel. So I will support it because it's something that we need at least. But I'm sure we will find a solution through this. But I'm disappointed that majority of council here have downgraded the ethnic communities over the Rainbow community.
I'm just going to speak quickly because I want to say that that is not at all what we're doing. And we are absolutely thinking about the ethnic community. And what we're doing is we're saying that we want to do this with them, not to them. And that is very different. Councillor Matthews.
Yeah, I strongly support us formalising our structures for these communities. But it did seem to me that this was a bit underbaked. And when councillor Calvert, I thank you for your work with these communities and I know that you take that work very seriously. But your speech started, I've been wanting to see this. And actually, what we need is the communities to come to us and say what they want to see. And that's the step that we're putting in, not watering down, but them speaking for themselves rather than us speaking for them. And I really think it's important that we don't pit our communities against each other. That, for example, we don't have an advisory group for Manu Fenua or for Maori people yet. But it doesn't mean that we think that the Rainbow community is more important than Maori or that, you know, every single person here wants to better engage with these communities. And that includes me, but I just want to see good process followed.
Councillor O'Neill.
Thank you. Just to speak briefly, I want to thank you councillor Calvert. And I totally would have supported your previous amendment. I felt that call. But I just have been listening over the last 24 hours around trying to build up communities so that they feel like we're empowering and we're engaging on equal ground and that we have those built relationships. And acknowledging that you have a lot of built relationships, but a lot of the other councillors around this table don't have the same relationships. And we need to make that broader first before we can have an advisory group. But otherwise, I would really like to see that happen. And just again, acknowledge your work there. And to acknowledge that I don't think it's an issue of prioritising. It's just an issue of us not being quite there yet.
I might be ready for a write-up reply.
Thank you, because I think we can speak more than once, and I will do that. Yes, I acknowledged, I said aye. But then I also acknowledged that other people commented about how when they first came on the council, that was the first thing they were going to do about the Rainbow community. And so I think it's important that we are working with these, with different parts of our community. And so I think you need to take that into consideration. So look, we're going to support this. I know I can see it because what's the alternative? But as I said, still very disappointed. Thank you.
Do you like a write-up reply?
Thank you.
Thanks all. I think, you know, I understand the frustration that I'm hearing a disappointment around the table. I think that this is absolutely, we don't need another review and this isn't setting it up, up another review. It's saying we definitely want to work with this community. But we want them to tell us what that should look like, not for us to tell them. And one of the specific differences in terms of the wording of this amendment compared to the previous amendment is that it says specifically some other forum. So it might be an advisory group, but it could be something else. And that's really for those communities to come back and tell us. You know, councillor Calvert, at one point you said it was that this amendment was exactly the same as yours. And then you said that we'd watered it down. Those two things can't both be true. So I think that this is taking a slightly different approach. I think, I think about in response to some of the March 15 shootings. And one of the people I've really admired since then has been Anjum Rannan and the work that she's done advocating for her community on the national stage and what that must have cost her and the effort she must have put into that. And I've never met the woman, I really admire her. But if I were to meet her, I don't know how I would face her and say, oh, I set up this advisory group, you know, on your behalf because I'm sure it'll help. You know, I want to be able to say that we paused and we heard from these communities and gave them the chance to shape how they want to engage with us. And I would just say, you know, councillor Calvert, that I offered to work with you on this amendment earlier in the week. I responded to you by text to say that I would support a softer version of this, of your amendment, but you didn't respond to me. Frequently, when I bring amendments, the version that gets through to the table is not the one that I first wrote. I change it based on feedback that I get from my colleagues so that we can get something through. And so that's where we've ended up today. Kia ora, everyone.
Kia ora. So we'll put this to the vote. And that's carried unanimously. Fantastic. So now we need to go back to the substantive. I can't forget the whole thing because actually, we were talking about the advisory group review and it's important that we remember that. Does anyone want to speak to the overall review? Councillor Conde does.
I would love to. I just want to thank all the advisory group people who came in to speak to us today. And particularly, Kia ora to the accessibility advisory group members who are still with us. Thank you very much. It was lovely to hear that you've really noticed an improvement in the relationship and how these groups are functioning in the last year. I think that reflects a lot of effort that's come from the Democracy Services team to improve those relationships. And I just want to thank you so much for acknowledging the work of those staff. We also think they're pretty fantastic, but it's great to hear from other people as well. I think it's great to hear that the efforts that our councillor liaison officers are really making a difference in terms of connecting with those groups and improving how they work. And I just wanted to particularly thank councillor Matthews, who's been working really hard to try and lift those conversations to the strategic level that the advisory groups are telling us they want to be at. The strategic early engagement conversations. And I think it's really fantastic to hear from these groups that they've seen a genuine improvement in the last year. I wanted to thank you for your patience and how long some of these reviews sometimes can take. But it's been also wonderful to hear from all of you that you feel that the review captured your experiences and that you support the recommendations about how we can improve how these groups function going forward. So I really appreciate the fact that you took the time to come in and speak to us today. And thank you to the staff who have been working on this review and getting it to the place that it is now. It's gone across to triadia with different people on the advisory groups and different councillors. And appreciate that you've managed to bring it back to us at the table with such a comprehensive piece of work. So I'm really looking forward to supporting it and can't wait to see how we manage to go onwards and upwards with these advisory groups.
Kia ora, I'll speak to this as well. I'd like to begin by thanking the advisory groups for their patience. I know that this went over a long period of time and it did actually cause quite a bit of nervousness and anxiety around what, you know, what was coming. And I know like particularly for the youth council, which I support alongside councillor Paul, that it meant that they couldn't actually bring on new members for quite a while. And so it's meant that numbers have dwindled. And I know that that's happened in other groups as well. And that does make it hard to keep things moving and to keep being diverse. Because, you know, naturally, when you lose people, you lose a perspective. So I'd like to thank them for persevering with us and for continuing to engage so beautifully with our staff. And I do want to acknowledge Democracy Services, their advisers do an amazing job supporting these groups. And I know they are so valued by the people who are giving us their valuable time. So thank you for your fantastic support. And I'd like to just go back and acknowledge councillor O'Neill's beautiful introduction. Because it seems like quite a while ago, you did, you did a beautiful job. And actually, you're the, just, I'd say you're the most qualified councillor to be able to talk about advisory groups because you've been on one as a member, I think actually councillor Fitzsimons has as well in the past. But, you know, and also sitting on a number of advisory groups. So thank you councillor O'Neill, you brought a lot of clarity and true understanding of what the advisory groups bring to council. And just to thank councillor Matthews for constantly checking with me how the review's going and when it's coming up in the forward programme. You did an effective job at making sure that it was going to come to council and also that it was going to be done at an accessible time. So thank you for doing that because, you know, it's not always easy for us to try and schedule it. But having that really clear message that we need to do that is important. But coming to the advisory groups, I personally really have appreciated. I last training, I also spent some time with PAG as councillor support. And I have to say that I've just seen so much growth in those groups for the individuals that participate in it. You can see the reciprocal relationship where we benefit from so much wealth of experience. But then also the people in those groups get to build confidence and learn more about the city that they live in and see that their voice can have an impact. You know, Tingaro Civic Square Youth Council were the ones that instigated the naming of that. So, you know, we see, we see many opportunities where each of the groups really help us shape what we're doing. And we're seeing it happen more effectively now as those relationships become stronger. And I really want to just respond about, from AAG, when Ellen talked about building that memory bank of information. I totally agree with that because actually, it came to me through someone from Manu Fenua as well that they're like, we've told council five times about our views on the town belt or whatever it is. But, you know, we need to make sure that somehow we keep that information alive because there's naturally turnover in any workplace. But some people in the groups are often actually here for longer and we need to respect that that information and their time is valuable. It's very hard to repeat the message over and over again. So there's definitely lots of things we can improve on. But I actually just mainly want to acknowledge that council's done a lot of improvement in quite a short time. And that's really encouraging. If we keep going at that rate, we're going to be smashing it. And I'm really looking forward to the new groups establishing, however that happens.
Councillor Wolf, if you'd like to speak.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. This is actually the second review that I've been involved in around the table. And I want to relate that there's a lot of legacy about our advisory groups and looking back at Baz and Carolyn and Baz definitely. We know the work that Brian Hanner did. I can't emphasise more as to certain people who were in council. You know, Brian started off in Democratic Services and followed processes through and grew things. And we look at our youth council now and they're considered as being best practice in New Zealand. Brian actually saw that and recognised that as well, which was great. You know, where we have the ability to bring people on board and then we see them go to bigger things in some respects is great. You know, I watched yesterday Siobhan Davies, who was the chair of the youth council, walk across the stage with an L L B honours, you know, and know that, you know, we helped her on her way. I see that with various people at PAG as well, where, you know, we're giving them and they're giving us as well. It's a sharing experience. Both ways, it's credibility and respectability. And more importantly, it's about the policy work that some of these groups, these advisory groups offer us. And I know that we all listen to these groups and that they give us some fantastic initiatives. So I'd just like to thank again the staff. And to say that from my perspective on council, the biggest privilege I've had was being on the youth council and also on the Multicultural Council in my first term. You know, I could not have been upskilled and learned as much I could not have been upskilled and learned as much as I did, as fast as I did, with that, particularly the youth council. So yeah, thank you. And obviously, I will be supporting the review.
Councillor Foon.
I'll keep it brief. And just thank everyone, thank everyone for their comments. And I do just want to acknowledge the collaboration of everyone to get to this point today and the work that's gone into it. But I think, just reflecting, and thank you for that, councillor Wolf. But as a new councillor, it does, did give me a lot of confidence, knowing that we had our advisory groups there. And then I do just want to also acknowledge you councillor Matthews for bringing it to the forefront all the time. But it really, it's what we need. We need it, because otherwise, you know, we'll just carry on without that recognition. But I just want to do a shout out to ERG. They, I guess, we've got a really great wealth of knowledge in that group. And it helps me benchmark my own thinking, because we all don't know it by ourselves. But knowing that they are there, and I know that they've contributed on papers that are really important, particularly around the waste buy law. So I think we're a really lucky council and a really lucky city to have this expertise coming in from all of our advisory groups to contribute on what we're doing. And actually, yeah, more of it and louder and more often and more ahead, rather than behind, will be great. Thank you.
Kia ora, is there any other court at all? Or shall we go to our right of reply from councillor O'Neill? Let's do that. Thank you.
This is not to diminish the significance of the policy, but I just wish, simply wish to say thank you. And thank you to all the councillors who have thought about and rolled over amendments in the last few weeks. I know it's been weighing heavy on the minds. And to officers for your diligence and keeping up with this process. And I put the motion.
Kia ora, let's vote. Our remotes are still working. Yeah. Okay, so that's carried unanimously. All right.